Okay, I'd like to call the January 7th meeting of the Carthage City Council to order. Will they record please? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Um, consideration of bills over 2,000? Ma'am, your turn.
Uh, guys, we just have the audit that we do annually for Mr. Poole and it's the same as it always is, it's $8,900. And I set the audit books on each one of your tables. So that's how many bills I have this time.
Motion to approve. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Uh, any discussion? Not all in favor?
Aye.
And you have some light reading to do over the weekend. We'll, uh, okay. Concerned citizens report, are there any citizens here who would like to speak to any issues? Yes, sir.
May I?
Could you give us your name and your, your rank title or whatever?
Uh, ma'am, my name is Jeremy Hassler. I'm the attorney for the county and I'm here on behalf of the county, specifically the property assessor's office. I know you all have an item on your agenda for their unfinished business for the tax, uh, the property assessor's bill for the parcel appraisals. I had a couple of conversations with your attorney and I appreciate those and I appreciate the conversation that we've had. Um, and, and he suggested that I, I address you all to not, with any concerns or questions you may have, I don't know that I can answer all of them. Uh, but, um, I wanted to make avail myself to you because I know there's been some questions about this and I know your prior financial officer did a pretty good explanation, actually a really good explanation last month as to how the calculation came, uh, was done, but there were still some questions and I thought I would, uh, swing by here tonight and avail myself to you, uh, on behalf of the county.
Not sure if you can ask a question?
No, this is just a...
It's just public comment, I'm just making the statement that I'm here, uh, and that this, we know that this came as, uh, it, we've never, or the tax, the property assessor has never billed this to you before and so it came as a surprise, uh, to you. Uh, it was his choice to, to submit this invoice as is his prerogative based on statute. Uh, he has just chosen, he, for many, many years, um, it's been on statute that he could, he just has not. Uh, he chose to this year or actually last year, uh, and we've gone to this point, um, it was my hope that I, I could be here and I will continue to be here until you take up that, that item, uh, and I can try to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you very much. Anyone else have, uh, citizens here in concern to talk to? Okay. All right, thank you. Then we'll move into the reports.
Were we gonna talk, I guess I could talk about citizens concerned. Were we gonna talk about, um, I had mentioned maybe to you, uh, or put it on the agenda that we talk about the homeless issue and, um, how we might be put together a citizens committee to work on that? Or is that...
I believe we, Steve and you were gonna work on that and then come back with maybe some possible means?
Oh, okay. Okay, I don't mind, that's fine with me.
Okay.
But that's a concern I have, we're gonna see increased homelessness and we've kinda struggled, we've, we've known of a few people here that we've kinda struggled with, what can we do, how can we help? And so when it begins to grow, which we all expect it to be, and I'm getting a lot of emails from the state saying that they expect it to grow, and I did sit in on a grant workshop that there are funds that we can go after.
Barbara, if I make a suggestion, as of now, today, you can, uh, ask the council to add it to the agenda. We have the agenda to discuss. I'd be happy to.
That's fine, I really didn't see it as a city council, I just wanted in this group to be a concerned citizen, that maybe we have a, a citizens committee that worked on that. But thank you.
The supervisors actually have talked about it too, so we were hoping, Steve is kinda spearheading that group, that we can all work together, so maybe...
Yeah, we had our supervisory meeting, one thing the mayor asked us was try to come up with something positive for 2021 for the town. And it was mentioned once again about the homeless shelter, but we had mentioned it maybe a year or two prior, but it never really went anywhere. So after discussing it, the mayor asked me if I was going to look into maybe trying to get some information and I got some guidelines as far as trying to start a nonprofit homeless shelter. And then when I was speaking to Pastor Tammy, which works with you some, she said that you was already maybe working on some. So I went back to the mayor and I think what we need to do is just get together and I asked her maybe to speak with, uh, Mayor Mullinax, Mayor Pox, and Mayor Mason, and just see if we can get a meeting of anybody that's concerned and would like to have a party in it. And then let's just kinda make little committees and have some that search grants, maybe some search for buildings and dissipative states for to do, but I think it's gonna be a very good positive thing for the county or the city.
Yeah, I think you've got a great source here for your grant work and, and great enthusiasm. So if we could, maybe schedule time to, to start a small committee and work on it, that would be great.
That's good to me. It's gonna affect our city and our community.
Yeah, it's, it's long overdue, you're right. Yeah, thank you. Um, okay.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion that would limit, uh, topics of discussion to two minutes on each agenda item.
Okay, a motion has been made to limit to two minutes each topic. Do I hear a second to that?
Second.
Okay, uh, any discussion on that?
Yeah, uh, I'd rather us, if we need to limit it, um, the best Robert's Rule, the word to do it is you can just say, um, motion before, or, you know, the, what is motion, call it a, call it a question. You call it a question. So if we want to have a discussion, we do that, we're just, we're just gonna tie our hands, if we do that, if we need to spend more time with something, we've limited it.
Is there any further discussion? Yes, sir.
I've got a question, David. I don't know if I understood your motion correctly or not. That was two minutes per person, right?
Per person, that's correct. And then we discussed it last time, if it deemed to need more time, we can, the council can definitely...
Two thirds of the majority.
Get additional time, that's correct.
Okay. Need further discussion in that motion? Okay, all in favor of limiting two minutes per person? All aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, thank you. Um, thank you. Uh, then we go into reports. Uh, my report is just, great things are happening for our city, if you've seen our downtown with the facade, it's looking wonderful. We have a lot of new businesses coming in, even a hot wings business I'm hearing, which everybody seems to like. We've got some great restaurants all over town. So just thank you to everybody who's working hard, to our supervisors who are working hard to keep this town. What do we keep it, Steve? Safe? Healthy?
Yeah.
Beautiful and financially stable, that's their mission statement, and I really appreciate that they put that together, so, thank you. Uh, Mr. Moore, do you have a report?
I don't have a formal report. I know we've got a couple of agenda items to discuss, but if you have any questions, let me answer them.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question. Um, were we gonna talk about the, I didn't see it on here, maybe I missed it, the open, um, position that we have with this city?
Uh, we're still getting applications for that.
Okay. I thought you might talk about it in the report, cause I didn't see it on.
Oh, I'm sorry, well, we have so far, uh, four applications and there are other, because of the holiday, there's some other people who want to apply, so we thought we would just give it a couple more days for them to get, yes, sir.
Do we have a deadline of when we cut that off?
Well, originally it was before the holiday, but then everybody said please, so I think maybe next Monday or Tuesday.
Well, if we're, um, if that's something that'll have to come forward to council anyway out of then.
Right, right.
Which, I don't see any reason to cut it off until right before the next meeting.
I don't either, very honestly, so I'd love to have some more time, cause I think there's some very qualified people who do wanna apply, and we've got some who've already applied, so...
Okay.
Okay, yes, sir.
Uh, can we, uh, for the next council meeting, can we put that on agenda to have whoever applies if they wanna come and represent themselves to the council and...
Well, we, we will have actually, we, you're gonna do an interview, yes, with these folks? We might, uh, they, they have sort of asked if we could do it so it's not quite as, it's one-on-one kind of thing, so we're, we're working on maybe a way to do that. So each, each council member gets a chance to, to talk, they kinda rotate around, uh, so everybody has a chance to actually interview each person.
Is this a special call meeting?
Uh, well, we might could do it before the regular council meeting, we're working on the best way to do this. Some of these people, police realize they, they have jobs right now and they kinda need to make sure, you know, we don't want to, they're, they're just asking for they could do it one-on-one, maybe as a possibility, so we'll talk about that a little bit more. But, um, I think Sam's idea is good, let's just keep it open until next meeting, if that's okay, and see who, who applies.
I'm fine with that, we need to have transparency though, so the public can see what the public do and what the questions are, so...
Well, not on the interview, I don't, I disagree with that. I've never seen anybody that had to be in a public meeting in front of the county, the whole county, when they still have a job. I just think every employer respects that. You don't wanna sit in, in a meeting that's public sites at the whole county and say, "I'm looking for a job, I may be leaving my position," cause that could make an issue. I just don't think it needs to be public, I mean, we need to be transparent, but as far as an interview process, I don't know that it's ever been a public process. I would, I would be concerned about that if it were me, and I were looking to get another job, but...
Well, we got two employees here that have a public interview. It's a public process. I'm just saying, um, it's a public position, um, if you want a private position, go for private jobs, it's a public position.
When we interviewed, I know, when we interviewed before, I believe...
We did an interview with a city attorney, it was...
Well, that's true, that's true. Well, anyway, let's just keep getting these things in, we can find out what's the best for them, you know, if they, I mean, some of them have said we, we can't put our jobs on the line this way, if, most of them have, we have jobs, so, yes, sir, yeah.
I believe the difference will be that, like Attorney Moore was seeking additional employment as opposed to a primary.
That's correct, that's correct.
There's two different, two different functions there.
That's correct, and you claim.
And I hate to come here and have interviews and interview one person, they don't get the job, and their boss says, "Well, you were trying to find another job."
Yes.
"We're in that Will State, have a nice day."
That's right, that's right, good point, agree with you, good point. So if you will, let's, let's just keep it open like Sam suggests till next meeting and then, um, everybody will get a chance to talk to each one of them, if that's okay. More of a one-on-one kind of thing. Okay, all right, thank you. Um, so were we at, are we yet? Yeah, no, I'm sorry. Madam Recorder, are you...
I, I just wanted to update that the office is running pretty smoothly considering, um, I wanna give kudos to Julie and Cindy, they have really stepped up and turned roles that they never had to do before, so I'll tell them how much we appreciate them. Uh, I also wanted to let you guys know that we applied for, it's called a grant, but it's not really a grant, through our liability insurance, I turned in all the documents. We did get approved for it, so we're gonna get new money for the new door, for security purposes, the front door, so that was a good thing that was going on, but that's all I've got for right now.
Thank you, all right. Um, Chief Davis?
I don't have anything eyes other than just our regular monthly report sitting in front of you. Um, just so you know, last month, Tron Davis did graduate from the police academy, he did an excellent job down there, and he's currently serving right now, so...
Wonderful.
If y'all have any questions for me, feel free to ask.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, let's, if public works.
I have nothing, I'm gonna let y'all go to the questions.
All right, thank you. Uh, water sewer, Eric?
Uh, only thing I have, and this, this relates to Rusty, the water plants, we did have our sanitary survey where the state come in and, and inspected us and looked us over, and preliminary reports are, we're gonna receive a 100 score on that.
Wonderful, wonderful.
They come in on December 17th, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, go ahead. No, I'm, go ahead. Guys, I had to...
Uh, they come in on December 17th, T-Dex did their compliance audit, and, uh, I got the letter, I got the letter back, we did score 100 percent, so...
And that's wonderful, thank you so much, all of you. That's, that's, can't get any better than that, so thank you very much, and actually Rusty, it's your time anyway.
Yeah, I was just, that was, that was my main item, I really don't have anything else to cover, uh, unless, unless you've got any questions, I'll, I'll answer them.
Okay, thank you. Okay, um, questions, uh, oh, Steve, the wastewater plant, please.
Uh, the only thing is the INI pilot project that we've been working with, trying to get through the state, we're still closer, I think I got three cities, we're, we got one of them, but we still got more paperwork and hoops to jump through, but this is major from Towne Partridge, uh, to be able, if we can get this and have them come in and go through it, have their collections, the whole collection system, and just have data on it, you know, have blueprints, have it before we can pull it up on the computer, find out where the worst leaks are, where we're getting the most INI out, then we can fix it. So, I mean, this is a big thing, for us to get this, and, uh, other than that, the plant's running like it always has, it does pretty good, and we're holding it together.
And they, you do an amazing job with our older plant, all of you do that.
And we, we are looking at changing the, uh, we've already got a budget to go from the pouring to gas to bleach, hopefully between now and the next council meeting, we'll have that, that change made in the plant, that'll be...
And, and for people who, like me, had no idea what INI meant, can you explain that is our actual sewer lines?
It was filtration and inflow, and basically where a lot of the old pipes got busted, or say down at the walking track where they put the trailer park out, if they didn't go in and cap off all those lines, uh, anywhere that, when the rain, when it rains, rainwater gets in it, so instead of us getting just sewer water coming in, I think our last, uh, estimate in 2019, about 46 percent of what come into the plant was rainwater, it was runoff, it wasn't even sewer water. So when we hauled it, we were all capacity, half of our capacities just from water coming in, don't need to be coming in, so that's what we're trying to get a hold of on, and that's gotta be fixed before we even look at building another plant or anything, you know, you gotta fix this before you can do that. And Towne Partridge, they've been here a long time, they sewer pipes down there, I guess, in the 50s, 60s, and, uh, if you put a camera on the line, and you might find some roots, and you say, "Well, I need to fix this," and it might be fixed, but it may not be the problem, where the water's getting in. So when they do this big study, and when they get through with it, we'll know where to start, if it's the problem.
Yeah, we're, we're very fortunate to, to be one of three who can do the studies, so thank you very much. Um, Mr. Joe, oh, hey.
Have my monthly report, mayor, and the only other thing, we have begun a 64-hour basic class, not full class, we began that, and then don't have anything else.
And, and I want to tell everybody, you did a wonderful thing last night with your trainees to honor our former fire chief, Mr. Stallins, it was really beautiful, so a couple of you were able to be there, but, um, thank you for that, it was lovely. And by the way, they are, uh, they had a little lapse on trying to get the memorial, but he's given us an email now that he's gonna be up and moving forward with it. I, I think they had some, like everyone else, some COVID problems with them, but slowed them down a bit, so, thank you, all right. Uh, grant records, okay, we've got, um, first of all, we've got engineer Evan White here is gonna tell us about, bring us up to date on the walking track, anything else that you're working on?
Um, we took bids on the walking track for the second time, maybe the third time, I think it's the third time. Uh, second time, nobody showed, so, uh, the third time, we had three bidders, um...
I think that's in your packet, is that right?
Yes, I should have, the bid schedule probably, and I've got a letter of recommendation here, uh, it's I can guard construction, they're out of garbage here, they're local. Uh, the base bid amount was 85,505. We grant a lot of 93,000 in the current budget, plus or minus a little bit there, um, that's why I put approximately in the letter for construction, so it actually come in below the budget, um, but, um, we also put two alternates in there, between the two tracks, if y'all real familiar with it, it hardly got the grain down there for nothing. So the previous engineer only addressed paving the track and didn't address any drainage. So we put in the plans to the state to actually, um, fix the drainage issue the best we could for the amount of money that's, uh, that y'all had in the budget, and it actually came in at, if you do the grading, also, it'd be 103,505, so you'd be liable to spend 10,505 more dollars if you opt to do that option, so, uh, I'll give you three options here. Option one would be to take the base bid amount of 85,505 and you would not be, um, liable for any additional funds. You can take the base bid plus alternates at 103,505 and you'd be liable to put 10,505 more dollars towards the, your grant match. Um, Allison's not here, she actually has what the original match was, I don't have that, um, information, so I'm thinking it was 20 something dollars supposed to pay anyways, so, um, and the third option is reject all bids, and I would not suggest that one at all, because we've bid this three times and it's finally coming under budget, so, uh, I've, I've worked with this group on, uh, another project, and they're doing, they're doing good work, so I don't expect, um, there to be an issue with contractor there. Uh, he's been in business many years, but he started backed up, so, and he's local to y'all, so, if you got any questions, I'll try to answer it, just whoever makes a motion, you willing to add to the motion contingent upon T-Dex recreational trails program approval? Because technically, they've gotta approve the bidder and the bid results also, so you're, you can do it two ways, and y'all can do it at the same time they're doing it, which we're doing, to speed things along, or you could have waited for them to take two to three weeks to prove it, then we'd have to come back in February and do this, so I'm trying to, I'm trying to speed y'all along, so...
Do you feel like in the engineering versus what the, particularly the low bid, because there's such a big gap in these bids, does low bid gonna adequately take care of the drainage and not create a, uh, drainage problem for our surrounding pit?
It's the same amount of runoff, it's just, it's so flat right now that it just stands, so you're actually gonna run that off. Um, so, my calculation wise, no, you shouldn't have any more there than it really would, it's just it ponds, so, uh, that's the issue, we're only fixing the pond and we're not speeding anything up, they're just gonna go in there and clip the grass off and take soil from the higher areas, there's a mound in the middle, they're gonna cut that mound down and spread it out where everyone will drain and, and sow the seed back, so, uh, we're not really putting any more impervious area, though.
But on the southern side of the track, as you're walking down through there, um, there, I think there's one culvert under there, I believe, might be two.
There's one big one, and we're gonna add a, a smaller one up for it. Um, if you've been down there, that, as you walk around that side, it holds on the right side, um...
Right.
...a lot of water, we're gonna put a concrete ditch there, cause it's just so flat.
Okay.
So that will no longer hold water.
That's right.
That's part of the base bid, though, so the only additional money there is between the two tracks, where the mound is, is the additional grading, so...
So your thing is it's running off the mound and onto the track area?
Well, the mound is blocking it from going in.
Right, yeah, okay.
We're just knocking the mound out, basically.
Thanks.
So Evan, if I understand, if we, if we do the grading work and then we plant the seeding, it's gonna be the 103, is that what?
It is correct.
Okay. And that's pretty close to where we were anyway, uh, and I think, isn't Allison trying to see if we might get a...
Yeah, she's trying to see, and she's still hasn't heard back, as the last that I talked to her on additional funds that they might be giving.
Right, because we...
I wouldn't expect it, because we've already got a grant, so...
Right.
Um, but it, and as far as the prices go, you've got a local contractor versus two out-town contractors, it's quite a bit of your difference there, you've got ones from Landon, ones from Knoxville, so, you've got your business at home.
Okay. So do I hear a motion, I'm sorry, first?
Uh, two, two things, you said continue on T-Dex recreational, I didn't hear the rest of that.
Trails program.
Trails program.
It's our team, yes.
Um, and second thing is, uh, that 93K, that's, um, that's 100 percent grant, correct?
No, the 93 is in the budget with the, with y'all's max to begin with, so...
It's already budgeted, okay.
Yes, that's in the budget, so...
Okay, so, let's, let's say, if then we go forward with, uh, approving the, uh, number one bid with the alternate one and alternate two, or sorry, alternate two, whichever one, let's say it's alternate two, we're gonna be 10,505 over, so we'd have to amend our budget for that, is that correct?
Correct, you would need 10, you were drawing, come up with 10,505 from somewhere.
But, but, I'm sorry, one and two are two different things, so you don't do one or the other, do you?
Yeah, you either take the base bidder, take the base bid with the alternates, because I can't do one alternate and not the other one.
Right.
One's grading and one's sowing, so, if they grade it, you wanna sow it, so, I just broke it up so we could see, uh, a line out for each one what they're charging, so...
And so at the bottom, you have total bid alternate number two by itself, total base bid alternate number one and two, you got your turn, and so the total right there would be 103,505. Okay, those are my questions.
So...
And we would, would we, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Um, would we be voting on this, during new business, on that approval walking track bid, or would we do it now?
If you wanna go ahead and do it now, you can.
Can, okay.
All right, I'll motion that we, uh, go with bid number one with alternates one and two, that, uh, drainage is very important, there's none of the water problems out here, um, and knock it out, get that, uh, seeding and all that stuff, cause that's gonna help along with grading, so...
Sow.
And I'm, uh, sorry, I gotta finish, I'm sorry. And having contingent on T-Dex recreational trails, um, program, program, yeah.
Okay, so we have a motion to have the regular with the two alternatives and T-Dex approval. Second, first, I'm...
I get it, whatever, we'll...
Okay, all right.
I'll third it.
Second, third, so... Counselor, Petty, okay, any further discussion on that? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, thank you. Evan, did you wanna speak to anything else?
I'm in the fire hall, I'm working on the fire hall, uh, so I'll have to brush it with y'all. Um, we've had a surveyer come down, the property lines, I guess the property's probably almost 100 years old, uh, hadn't had a easement, or, I mean, a port of deed in many, many years, so, uh, the property line to decide that we're adding an addition to is in question, so we're having to do a lot of homework. The surveyor's about got it established where it's gonna be, and we come down and picked up topo this past week, so we're about a month out as far as getting, uh, final plans done on the fire hall there, so, um, it's took a little longer just because of all the, this ever surveyor I know backed up for months, and I pushed as hard as I could push to get them to, to show up to do this, so...
So timeline on that would be, um, about a month, we'll have a survey...
A month, I'll have the plans to go, the planning, y'all's planning, and then it could come to the council at the same time, so...
Okay, and then at that time, we'd be approving...
Well, you go out to bid.
So, bid, proving you go out to bid.
I'd say you'll have a, you know, we could bid it in February.
Okay.
Then we could council approval and then go to here, right?
Well, the council would just like to know...
I mean, I'm sorry, planning commission.
...the bidder is, so, I don't know, I'm like, to...
I think the planning commission will have to take a look, too.
They will.
Yeah, okay, great.
So, mayor, so we will make sure that that goes to planning commission first, correct?
Right.
So, probably March.
So, so the county go to planning commission February, March come back here, correct?
Okay, yeah. Unless you have ready next week, I doubt that you'd have that, though, right?
I will.
Okay, all right, thank you. Uh, okay, um, the other grant that we finished is the facade grant, we got final money in the bank or whatever, uh, on that, so, again, a tremendous job, I wanna thank the committee, and one was Sam's father, Mr. Dr. Petty was on it, John Wagner Jr., from the two historical sides there, um, Salter Brackley was on it, Carol Wilmore was on it, Randy Dixon was on it, Bill was on it, Councilman Reese was on it, um, Billy McKinley, is Billy McKinley up? And we just wanna thank you, cause it was a lot of months of trying to make sure everything looked historical, and I just think it's beautiful, and I know what they've done, so thank, thank you to all of those folks. Um, Steve Jones, who's with Water Management, uh, one can't be here tonight, so he sent this little update, so let me just quickly go through it with the, he's working on the Futural Alley Water Line, uh, that's a state revolving fund loan, so we're waiting on, um, T-Dex approval still, all, all of the financial paperwork and stuff has been in, And we just want to thank you because it was a lot of months of trying to make sure everything looked historical and I just think it's beautiful and what they've done. So thank, thank you to all of those folks. Steve Jones, who's with Water Management, one can't be here tonight, so he sent this little update. So let me just quickly go through it with the, he's working on the future alley water line. That's a state revolving fund loan, so we're waiting on TDEX approval still. All of the financial paperwork and stuff has been in. They have to do an audit of the town. Once that's done though, we'll send it back, the paperwork for y'all to approve the loan. There will be a public meeting, he says, okay? A thirty day advertisement period. So that's kind of the timeline for that one. Potentially bidding this in April is what he says. Of course, the state revolving fund pilot project that Steve was talking about, we're still having some paperwork that we're having to do. We're, we are approved as far as one of the pilot projects, but we still have to, they go through all of these audits and stuff of the city before they can come together with the loan paper scores. The Turkey Creek was the water tank, but now we're going to do the booster stations, the water pumps. Rusty has a timeline that we've sent and he's taken a look at it. He thinks it's probably very, very realistic.
Well, yeah, that's the engineer's projection.
Just looking, he's begun work on the design after receiving authorization in December twenty-first. Preliminary site plan is ready. We're working on the sizing of the pumps and alternative configurations to meet the best needs of the water system. Then somewhere around January nineteenth, he's going to meet with Rusty and some of the staff to go over the design options and let them talk about that. So moving along with that one. And the wonderful part of this was we were able to move the funds from the ARC grant from the water tank over to this. At first we thought we were going to lose it all together, but we, we kind of talked to him and pleaded and they said, well, your, your end goal is going to be the same thing, so we'll let you use these funds. So that's, that's very good that we got to do that. That's it for the grants unless anybody else has something there. Okay, we're going into unfinished business. Again, we don't have that, say revolving fund loan, I and I, loan paper yet, they're still working on. So that item will have to just push back until we get that paperwork. The gazebo budget amendment, I believe.
Do we need to motion that puts on the next month's?
Well, we can, but it's really dependent on them when they get it to us. So we could, we could, but we'll, we'll just put it on. As soon as we get the paperwork, we'll put it on.
Okay, you'll put it on either way, okay.
Yeah, yeah, as soon as we get, yeah.
Just go ahead and finish your thought.
No, no, that's, yes ma'am.
I just wondered if we could move number six up because Don is here to talk about the Seaman's Building and that way we won't keep him here.
Sure, that's fine with me. Would you like to vote, make that a motion and we'll vote on doing that up or do we have to do that?
If everybody agrees.
Okay, let's just do it, all right. Okay, Mr. Don.
I'll take the second. Robert had told me, Bill, different ones were concerned about the ceiling, where you talked about putting the ceiling into the performance hall. And when you put a drop ceiling in like this, or anything close to this, you're going to kill the acoustics, which is what the performance hall is really all about. There's, I've been looking at some different venues. Matter of fact, we just was at the GM at the Baptist Church over in Gordonsville. And of course, it's got the same, same type of vaulted ceiling that the thing has, but they've gotten, I don't know what they've used, but it looks like some kind of tiles. They ran it all the way up, but the acoustics are still good in that room. And my whole thing is, is trying to salvage, because that, that building is just special. And if you've ever, if you've ever been in it, done anything, or had it, of course, you had to bend some things in there. And you'll want to continue that, but I, I could see somebody going in there from Nashville recording sometime, that, you know, I mean, it can happen. But if we kill the acoustics, then the room's no different in, in the office building.
All right, thank you. We actually do, and why would that? We got two different things from Mr. Lish, who had worked with y'all. One was a drop ceiling, but the other, if you look in here, is for spring, the kind of foam you were talking about.
Right.
And that's actually the least expensive of two. If you look at, one is ten thousand, you know, almost nine thousand something, one is seven thousand, almost eight thousand. But I mean, we can discuss that now because that's in your packet here if you want, if we go that way. Let me just finish that thought. What he's saying is if we go with the foam, which would go up in the rafters, like we're talking about, the museum, no one can be in the museum or in the whole building, the spot or anywhere for three days while they're doing that because it is somewhat toxic. And they have to wear certain apparatus. So that would be the only caveat. We'd probably have to do it on a Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday while nobody's in the museum.
This is some, this is, just to refresh my memory, if we went with this, would we be doing this somewhat under the COVID grant so that we have a meeting space? Is that?
That was the?
That was the kind of?
The original, that was the original.
But we can't do that now.
But we can now, so this would be something that we?
We'd run out of the timeline for that.
But we've got funds and building maintenance that could cover that somewhat.
There's, there are some building funds that could cover part of this if we, if you chose to do that. Yes, Councilman Reese?
Can I ask Don a question? As far as the spray foam installation, have you seen that done and what's the effects of that as far as acoustics go?
Well, it actually keeps you from getting, if you've ever been in the accent or a tight, it can get real booming, but the way this is and the way the foam does, it actually, just like if you had a, a recording booth and you use these different foam things when they're to control your acoustics.
Well, that's the reason why I'm asking. I have this at my house out in the sunroom and it's done under tin, it's tin and a little insulation up there. The sound is totally different in that room than if I go in another part of the house.
Yeah.
If it rains, the guy told me, vicious people told me, if it rains, it's going to be amplified as far as the sound hitting the, the tin roof. So that's my concern. Question is, have you seen this done anywhere else? I, I'm thinking, I don't know, y'all correct me, it was done many years ago, the high school gymnasium. The acoustics in that's horrible. I don't know if that's spray foam insulation or what's up there, but we've done things in there and the sound is just awful in that room. So that's my question.
Yeah. Well, another thing too is they sometimes, like you see a lot of metal buildings now and what they do, they've got the tiles of insulation that goes up, which is, the heat is the big thing. And you can get those, and those do a good job. I, I've actually played music in where they, they take a metal building and set that up and it was fantastic for me as far as the sound goes. So that's, that could be an alternative about the, as far as the, come the other way, never thought much about that, the tin roof. But now we've got, that's wood. What's on top of that? Is that tin on top of that? But you've got wood as far as your?
Well, the guy, he recommended after he sprayed the foam in, if I didn't like that sound, if it drove me crazy, I liked the sound. But if I didn't like it, just put insulation, or batty insulation on top of it or underneath it or whatever, and that would fix it. But I kind of liked it. It does amplify it. It is a totally different sound in there than you would be anywhere else.
Do we need that? Do we need something that would act as an insulation also? That's part of our goal, right? To improve the heat. So could we kill two birds with one stone if we did insulation, insulated?
You could put insulation under it, up against that foam.
I thought the foam was for the purpose of insulation.
That's what it does.
Well, it just, extra amplify, application, whatever.
The foam is almost eight thousand, I give it a little pride. I think what I'm understanding from Don is it's sort of like creating a sound studio because you've got, I mean, which is a good thing. Yeah, yeah.
And for anybody to come in, like I said, and set up, of course, I'm looking at it from a musician's point of view, but when you start setting your speakers and all your stuff up, you want to be able to sit over there in the corner and hear it not from anywhere in the room because you've got your chairs all fanned out. So looking at it from that way, you want those acoustics to, to do what they need to do and like Bill said, but not get booming. You know, yes.
Have you dealt with any buildings where, I've seen this before, I think, found at the university gymnasium this day, where they put essentially banners or flags that go across that have the reverberation a little bit?
Now, I've seen that in high school sun, yes.
I mean, I was saying a combination of both.
Yeah, it, it may, it may have a little bit of effect, but not, I don't think enough to where, it, it might help when you've got a bunch of kids in there and you've got, you know, to, to knock, get some of the echo out, it'll maybe help that sun. But it's, you, but it's almost, you can't control it with that.
Councilman Babcock?
Yes.
Will this make the sound better or leave it the same? Would it enhance it?
It'd pretty much leave it, because that room has just got a, a sound to it. It's just, it's just like a certain guitar, it's got a certain sound to it.
So this, this will not enhance it in any way or will it still be the same way that?
I think it'd be pretty much the same way, just I think it's saying it's getting a little bit easier.
One of those buildings were done, they were, you know, their recorders dirty because of the, the acoustics in it. You can't build one like that now.
Yeah, Councilman.
Are we voting on something tonight?
Well, we have two possibilities here and we could make a motion to at least further examine the foam part because we're doing this mainly for the heating in there, the heating and cooling.
Oh, wait, wait, I'm sorry.
The central, the central unit's not big enough to heat that big of a space. That's why they come up with a drop ceiling, to reduce the space in that room.
I was a dumb mayor, if you don't mind.
Okay, yes sir.
This is my opinion on this. I love the arts. I don't believe the city government has any place in the arts. I think that that is a private sector issue and that should be handled in private sector area. I think the last time we were talking about this, maybe about a year ago, we were talking about the possibility of selling or donating or selling at a low cost to the museum and getting it off the city books. So that way we're not spending any more money on it. So I did want to let the new council know that that's kind of was a discussion. Again, I don't think it's a wise use of our city taxpayers' money as far as our limited budget to be spending money on acoustics of a room. As much as I support, I think we should, you know, do that privately.
Well, just, just one second. It's not just the acoustics. If you remember, we tried to meet in there twice, once we almost burned ourselves because it was in summer and the other was freezing. So it's, it's mostly for insulation, but I guess what we're saying, can we insulate without affecting the potential for acoustics? So yes, yes, sir.
I make a motion that we leave the performing arts center the way it is.
I'll second the motion.
Okay. Any discussion about that? But again, remember, this, this is only to insulate it. It's not about acoustics.
And Mayor, I'd say on the discussion on that is, I, I didn't have an issue as far as we're using that COVID grant money to, and it was money that's not coming out of our city budget, it's coming out of our city taxpayers. And it's starting to morph into coming out of our city taxpayers because it's no longer being qualified under that COVID. So now let's just say, for example, another COVID grant comes along, we revisit it then? If we can get it through grant money, fine, but it's just not, it's not a wise use of our city taxpayer money.
Okay, maybe perhaps, yes ma'am.
It is a city building. It is a really nice sized room in a small town that has limited space for a multipurpose area. The city has use of that whenever they need use of it and I could, I could foresee us continuing to use it as a city for ways that would serve the community well. But it is a city building and it's just a matter of, this is a room we can heat and cool and have a multipurpose room that we can use in the city. Citizens can use that room. It, it's going to be for the small amount to get it more usable, we've already put electricity in there so that we can use it as a multipurpose room. It just does enhance it if we're careful about how we fix it because it is an old building and it'd be nice to keep it in, in use for multipurpose. But my thought is the city owns it, we need to have it usable and that's very little bit of cost and it's already in the budget.
Okay, Councilman?
Do we know what our annual cost to heat and cool that part of that building is?
Well, right now, the, the museum's paying for it. They, as of last year, when we did the new contracts, all of the people who are using those buildings are now paying their own utilities.
So it really wouldn't cost the city anything to heat and cool it, but we use it a lot.
I think the, the reason this all came about is we know we can't always meet here and with COVID, we can't meet in our council room because we do have to spread out like we are now, at least six feet apart. That was going to be the alternative, if we could get it where it was somehow insulated and we could use it.
But that's not always going to be the case, hopefully.
And even with, without COVID, the, the meeting room at the city is too small. It really is too small for the public to be in, even if it weren't COVID. That'd be a great to use all the time for our meetings, COVID or not.
Councilman, we haven't heard from a couple, but we're really supposed to go around with discussion. Councilman Peters, what are you, what is your thinking about this? We haven't heard from you.
I'm listening to, to everybody. I think it's, it's an important building, obviously, to the community to use. I don't disagree that things have changed from the original plan, that it was supposed to be. This grant money and now it's coming out of our budget. I'm, I'm still up in there, but I'm still just listening.
Okay, great, yes sir.
Eight thousand dollars for acoustics is not a little amount. I do remember last council meeting where a lot lower amount was a lot of money. So I think it depends on the special interest and if you have a possible special interest in it. Again, it's a great building. I don't think anyone here is arguing that. It is not the city taxpayers' money should be used to do that. Now, if, if, if the arts community feels that it should have better acoustics, I think that they can get together, work, do some fundraisers and raise the money to do it, just as we are doing with the gazebo and we could, we could get that money in there, have no problem then, but it should not come out.
But it's really not about acoustics. It's about heating the room.
Councilman Babcock, are you calling the?
I just want to make that same statement. It's not about the acoustics, it's about actually heating and cooling the, the building. But if you heard what Les said, even with that spray foam, it's still would not be able to heat or cool that building, so we'd be wasting eight thousand dollars.
They're saying you would have to drop the ceiling to actually?
Right, so that's what I'm saying, so we're defeating the purpose.
The rest of the museum does have?
For a bigger unity in one.
Yeah. So we have a motion on the floor.
I'll call a question.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Did we have a, we had a second?
Yes, yes.
Okay. I think we've all been around for discussion, which Robert Rule says we have to. So all in favor of, would you state your motion again, please?
Motion to leave the performing arts center as it is.
To leave the performing arts center, well, that performance hall the way it is.
Performance hall.
Okay, all in favor? Opposed?
Opposed.
I'm going to abstain because I'm, Kelly just said, I'm still in the dark on what's the best way. But I appreciate it from both sides.
Well, this doesn't mean we can't readdress it. Perhaps we can look for grant money.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Also, I would like for us to do a study on what it really would take to heat and cool that because I think either way we'll have to have more heat and cooling in there. No matter what we do to the ceiling, I don't think that unit's going to keep up with that large room. So I would like for us to at least, if we're going to down the road look for more funding for that, I would love for us to find out what it really does need to heat and cool.
I think it would be awesome to do that official, if we do that study, do a cost analysis study on what it costs the city to maintain that building and what kind of money we could save by selling that building to the private sector. I think that would go along, that would, we have two options, heat and cool, keep it or sell it and create some taxpayer money.
Okay, well, we, let's, we'll put that for another night, if you don't mind, on that. So if somebody wants to start looking at some grants, I hope potentially doing something. Thank you, Don, for coming in.
I'd like to make a motion real quick that we move up the tax assessor invoice update to the county attorney and go ahead and address that as well. Move that up on the agenda.
Is that all right with everyone to do that? Well, actually, our attorney's the one who's going to address it.
I know, he was here to answer questions.
Oh, well, okay.
So again, you know, we've been dealing with this issue, I guess since last summer when it was originally brought to the town based on an invoice we received from the property[1702.91] from the property assessor's office, um, asking for what he had calculated as the town's share of um, costs. I, I sent an email earlier today with some attachments and I know we've talked about it multiple times. I'm, I'm glad to go over it. But just in short, statute requires the town to pay one half of the reappraisal cost for parcels within the town. The problem is that we don't know exactly what those costs are. The, the um, invoice sent by the property assessor's office was basically the town's pro-rata share of the assessor's entire budget for that fiscal year. There was one line item in there that specifically was titled reappraisal program. So not having any additional information, based on that line item, we made an offer to the county uh, in October to pay the town's share based on that reappraisal line item. And that total, I think, was like five hundred and something dollars. Didn't receive any response to that um, until this was brought up on the agenda in December. And uh, the, the county attorney and I have had a couple of conversations since that meeting. We've talked about getting together with the meeting to discuss it outside of this with, with the respective mayors. But basically, the county's position is, is that they want to receive that entire amount for that fiscal year. I suggested to uh, the county attorney that they either make a counterproposal to our uh, October letter or some other proposal to bring back, or as, as he's here tonight, I suggested in the alternative, he can show up and present uh, his case to the council. I think he has done that. If you would like to ask any questions or if you'd like to make a motion, I think to, to have him speak would require a vote in and of itself as a suspension of the rule. I know we don't always do that, but uh, that's one, one extra item. So it's here before you, again, I think uh, just ask that he be here to maybe hopefully move this forward a little bit. But that's where we are.
I'd like to make the motion.
May I add one more thing to, I did talk to Mayor Paulus Monex this morning. And he had talked to their city attorney, he's the South Carthage mayor. And they're in agreement with what Mr. Moore is saying. And we'd like to see an agreement between all of the cities going forward, who are in agreement, how this should be best handled for all involved. So, so the South Carthage mayor and city attorney are in agreement with Mr. Moore on this. Yes, sir, go ahead.
I make a motion that we pay the bill that's been presented to us. I think we have uh, we've been given a good opportunity to not pay it for a long time. I think that it's, it's been brought to us now, what, ten thousand three hundred and eleven dollars is what I see. Um, I think we owe that. I think that's uh, in my life, if I owe a bill, if somebody gives me a bill for something, I pay it. I think we're responsible for ten thousand three hundred and eleven dollars. I think we should pay it.
Second.
Can I make an amendment to that motion?
Wait, 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 I'm sorry, we have.
Right, we've got, we've got a motion on the floor in a sense, so you can make a motion to amend.
Uh, I, and you can tell me how to do this. I, my, my motion was to suspend the rules to ask a question to the county attorney. Do that be proper, I don't know, proper protocol then?
I think we would have to get past this motion that's on the floor first or have that.
Can we not, we should. Discussion on the motion?
Yes, we definitely have discussion.
Can we ask the county attorney a question during discussion?
I, I think, again, that needs to be approved by the council if we want to do that.
Council Peter, would you mind rescinding your motion and then when you ask a question, come back with it?
No problem.
Okay. So you just.
Do I need to say that, I rescind my motion?
Um, motion to suspend the rules so that we can ask the county attorney some questions.
Motion to suspend the rules, do I hear a second to that?
I'll second.
That's a two thirds, right?
No, we're not, not for that.
Okay, um, all in favor? Aye. Okay, so what is your question?
My question was kind of to follow up on what you were saying. Um, it, does that seem as far as having a foregoing agreement with the county? I, I get their concern to saying, you know, I don't, I'm happy to pay this bill, but also I do want to see what the county's going to do in the future as well, so.
And I've had discussions with the property assessor on that. And uh, if, we, we completely understand that if your budgeting purposes, you need to be able to get an invoice and know what it's going to be. And, and we're happy to work with you as far as timeframes, when, when you'd like to see the invoice versus when he has that information available to him. And as far as timelines, we're happy to, to work with you with all that. I, I have not personally heard from South Carthage, I can't speak with, to them. I, Mr. Moore had written the letter to property assessor, so I reached out to him directly. And that's how this conversation got started, as courtesy, because he had reached out to us. But going forward, we'd be, we'd be glad to work with some kind of timeframe, yes.
City attorney, or does that sound reasonable to pay the bill with, with his answer that he just gave?
Yeah, and as I understood the original motion, that was just to pay this bill as it's been submitted. It doesn't require anything, the way, it's not in agreement with the county that this is the way it's going to be handled going forward. The town can still try to work out an agreement on that. But each invoice as it's submitted will, will have to be approved by this council.
That was going to be my question. Are we agreeing to pay this and we now have an agreement going forward? But you answered that, so we do not.
I, may I ask a question too? What formulas did you use to come up with that that are so different from what our, our attorney's saying?
The property assessor use is the formula which is on your invoice. Uh, he took his total uh, budget and, and then divided that out the pro-rata share of each parcel and accounted for the, the city's number of parcels and cut that in half. He used the total budget, his total budget amount, uh, mainly because that's in his Middle Tennessee Association of Assessors, the other counties that do this, that's the way they come up with theirs. It's, you know, the, the statute is, doesn't give guidance on how to calculate it. And that's the way that um, other property assessors that he deals with, that he has communications with on a regular basis, and that they, they advised him and I suggested that he do the calculation. And, and for all these reasons, they try to um, uh, maintain some kind of standard. And, and it's quite frankly, one of the more simple ways to create a, come up with a number using the budget at hand and, and pr, again, the pro-rata amount is, it's really about as fair as we could figure out to do it.
But this was brought up in the budget, the county commission budget meeting on that. Could you, would you mind telling us the difference between Gordons, what they paid and what we would be paying?
As far as what. As far as what the total amount was?
Yeah.
Gordons was in voice was eighty-five thirty-four.
So I, I was told that C Task was part of the group that statewide is, is pushing for this particular, is that not correct? I, I was told by M Task that this is a statewide thing, C Task has decided to go.
I, I have not heard anything from C Task on this.
So, so why again, are we just doing this right now? And then why, and are we, are we, are you open to doing some sort of agreement going forward that's amicable for all three cities?
As far as why right now, this is a service that the, that the property assessor basically provides to the city. It is, he has the authority to invoice the city. He simply has not up to this point. Uh, and, and has decided to, to submit this invoice to you. He has payment for the service that he renders to the city as, as the assessor.
So is it not, that's done every three, is it three or four years? How, how often do you, you do this reappraisal?
You would, you would have to ask that property assessor specifically, right, right?
Because we paid it in the past. We've gone through it three, three or four years ago. I just, I'm just trying to understand the timing of it.
I feel comfortable kind of what Barbara said. It's, we're just voting right now on this one invoice. So um, I think that that's, you know, kind of where, where it stands. So, and, and I think that, yeah, we'll hear more from the county as far as future stuff. But I mean, they're paying, I mean, I don't want to pay it, but we owe it.
I want to put my motion back on the floor again.
May I say we go ahead?
Okay, we have a motion to pay the bill in second, any further discussion on that? Now, what is the amount again that we're talking about?
Ten thousand three hundred and something?
Ten thousand three hundred and.
Eleven.
Okay, if there's no further discussion, all in favor? Aye. All opposed? Okay, thank you. Let's go on to the next. I guess we will go back to the gazebo budget amendment, which is this five thousand dollar amount here. Basically, all this does is it creates a line item for these contributions for the gazebo, which is, it's been all voluntary contributions.
Motion to uh, accept the ordinance via eight thousand two zero two zero one one zero five dash two.
Okay, we're accepting, is this the first or second reading?
This is the second.
The second reading to accept this.
Second.
Second, for that? Any, any further discussion on this?
I think it's great that citizens came together, raised this money and donated it for it, so I think it's a good way to do it.
So all in favor of this, creating this line item for these contributions? Aye. Any opposed? Okay, thank you very much. All right, so we're going on to, back in order of second reading of the agenda ordinance that we have created of, there is one thing that our city recorder was asking me today that we might like to, can we, we can amend it at this point, right?
Yes, well, yes, I, I'm assuming the amendment will be consistent with the caption of the word.
Yes, it's just a time thing. She's asking it rather than um, that, that she could um, that everything would be turned into her Monday at four P.M. So we'll read, this, any, any item of business that a council member wishes to add to the agenda shall be submitted along with related documents to the city recorder and, and mayor by four P.M. On the Monday before such meeting. And she would publicize it on that Tuesday. That gives her a little more time to get the paperwork and things together so she can then make the public notice. If that works, okay, yes, sir.
Um, before reading the ordinance, do we need to have a public hearing on it?
No.
Does it require a public hearing?
But our resolutions, we, is that correct?
Not in this kind of ordinance.
We wouldn't have to.
There are some ordinances that require by statute typically, sometimes by charter, require public hearings. But this, this type of administrative orders.
Now, let's say also we, I apologize, Steve. Okay, um, also, would we, like, let's say this happens, wouldn't we need to publicly post the agenda?
That's what we're, this is, that's what this is saying, yeah.
Okay.
Yes. Yes, sir.
I make a motion that we amend the ordinance to read the Monday prior to the Tuesday. I'll second.
Okay, for, for her to, the things to be turned in, okay.
Yes, turn it in by Monday and then so she can publish it by Tuesday.
Okay, with, with the relative documents, thank you. We have a motion second, any further discussion on this?
And that's just, that's just to make that change. On that, so we're just voting on the amendment, not on the whole thing, correct? Just making sure that's. This, this motion, that is correct. This motion is just voting on the amendment.
All right, so we're, we're voting on the amendment. So it would read that, that second sentence would read, any items of business that a council member wishes to add to the agenda shall be submitted along with related documents to the city recorder, mayor by four P.M. On Monday before such meeting, this, that would be amended that way. So all in favor of adding that amendment?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. And then we go back to the regular motions. Opposed?
Make a motion to approve the amendment.
We make a potion, a potion to approve, a potion to approve, okay. The amendment, Olive, second?
Second. The ordinance has amended, I assume that's.
Yes, make a motion to approve the ordinance has amended.
Yes, thank you. And we have a second.
Second.
Second. Uh, any further discussion on that? Yes, sir.
Okay, I'm going to point this out, because I'm hoping y'all realize what we're doing. We, we are, we are tying our hands. We are shooting ourselves in the foot by voting for this. Let's say that something comes along, and just hear me out on this, something comes along, that we need to address that council meeting, right? And it comes up um, on Wednesday and it's an urgent matter. You want to know what we can't do? We cannot add it to the agenda. Now, as it stands right now, let's say that I want to add Otamay to the agenda right now. And I say, hey, can we add Otamay at the end of, or beginning of new business? We have the power as a council to say yes or no. And so we're good to go there. If we do this, we completely cut our throats, shoot ourselves in the foot, and we are not allowed to bring anything up that might be of timely importance, one. Or two, of political importance and prepares for the whole spin factor of spinning political information. And so I would strongly advise everyone here to continue to maintain what we are, as we are representatives, and continue the way things go. Because if we don't like an item on the agenda, right now, we can go and say, we don't want to add it, we don't care. And it won't change a thing and it just gives, it keeps us having control of our agenda instead of turning our agenda over to the executive branch. And we are the check and balance to the executive branch.
Councilman Babcock, would you?
The last sentence is except, in case of emergency, as determined by two thirds of the council present at the meeting, which means we can add things at the meeting.
That's right, it's an emergency, and it's built into that.
Okay, and then second thing?
But wait, wait a minute, does anyone else have, I'm sorry, we've got to go around the room with discussion. Does anyone have anything they would like to discuss, add to this? Anyway, uh, we, okay, remember, Robert Rule, you get two, two times to discuss.
I do have something.
Yes, ma'am.
That I wanted to say, just um, I, I, what I see in this is that we are let, when we post that to the community, we are letting them know what items are on that. So that if they have interest or if they don't have interest, they can appear. So um, I really think we owe it to the community, to our citizens, to make sure that they have noticed of what that meeting's going to be about. So that's what I see happening here, not that it's taking away anything from us because we do still can do emergency issues.
Two, two things on that, I agree with you. Let's put the agenda out there for the public to hear. I have no issues with that, I don't think we need to do that, I think we should be doing that a lot. But second, let's define emergency. Emergency to her is different than emergency to you. It's the same as defining a more expensive project. I still have my two minutes.
Councilman, you've had your two times to speak, so. Let's let some, let's let someone else speak to this, please.
Can I, can I finish? I, I haven't had my two minutes and I didn't interrupt you. Is that acceptable, man? Can I finish?
Please finish.
Okay, thank you. Emergency definition is all relative to who decides what an emergency and what is not. And that emergency is dependent upon the executive branch. Again, you all are signing over that. Right now, we can go along as we are, we don't have to do anything, we're shooting ourselves in the foot. I've said my piece.
Uh, Councilman, you have a chance to then.
Well, we are not turning it over to her because it's two thirds of the council. So no, we're keeping, we're keeping the right to put things in.
Councilman Babcock, anything yet?
I just want to make a motion to approve this amendment.
Okay, are you calling, are you calling, calling for the question or?
Yes.
Okay, question's been called. Uh, all in, we proved, this is approved, now the motion is to approve it with the amendment?
With the amendment, yes.
All right, all in favor, please, say aye.
I need a second.
I thought.
Those aren't the seconds, those aren't.
Okay, I'm sorry, all in favor of approving of the amendment, all opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, the next item is the ordinance of hotel occupancy tax ordinance.
Mr. Moore? So I circulated a draft of, well, actually, I think, yeah, the first reading for that this afternoon to you. This was brought to my attention right before the December meeting. Uh, and Mayor, correct me if anything, I say maybe not quite accurate, but that the town approved, or the town's charter was amended, I think in two thousand and three to allow it to levy a hotel occupancy at quite large jurisdictions in Tennessee. However, at that time, there was no ordinance enacted to actually levy that tax. And I, I don't know exactly how this was discovered, but it was discovered sometime in like November or first of December. So what this ordinance is doing is enacting that tax that was authorized by the charter amendment about seventeen years ago. And it's here for you on first reading. I'm glad to answer any questions.
Is that, do we all have copies?
Uh, Mr. Moore, send out copies today.
I emailed, emailed.
Okay, okay.
It was the same draft that I had sent before last month.
Has everybody had a chance to look over that? Okay, uh, do I have a motion to?
Do I need, wait till the motion?
Basically, question.
Uh, I, I think I understand it correctly, but I just want to clarify. We have a, a home here called the Manual House, which is designed for ladies, troubled ladies for various reasons and they go and live there, what, six months or whatever?
Longer than that.
Whatever, and it's my understanding that they do pay some rent, right?
They, they do pay rent.
Yes, I wanted to make sure that, and it's a nonprofit, I want to make sure that we wouldn't be taxing this organization or whatever.
I don't believe that's going to fall within the definition of a hotel. Uh, now, again, and Mayor, correct me if this is not right, but I think maybe the way this was brought to attention is there was recently a change uh, at the state level that allowed for hotel occupancy, or maybe required for hotel occupancy taxes to be levied against um, like Airbnb and those types of establishments. So it would apply to them under the definition, but I don't think it would apply to the type of facility you're talking about.
That's more like a rental, I think, yeah. Good question.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, one.
I'll second.
First reading, second. Uh, any further questions about that? Yes, sir.
We have about a tax for everything in our lives, I think that idea here is to have more people come to Smith County for more reasons, we're taxing people, people are taxed to death right now, I think that we should not be adding this tax to any hotels, we need to be encouraging, also Airbnb's are popping up more and more, I, I forgot last time I counted, there's sixty-something Airbnb's here. We wanna encourage people to come to Smith County, spend their money in Smith County, we're gonna get that sales tax off of it, we start taxing other things, it's just kinda more discouraging, less Airbnb's, less hotel development, um, anything like that, so I would, I would stay my case that we should vote against another tax, I think we should be looking at cutting taxes in places.
I believe this is a tax that's already being levied by the state, isn't it? We're just sort of.
No, it, it was authorized by the state, but.
It's in our charter, yeah.
Right, it is in our charter.
And, and, like you say, back in 2003, whenever it was passed, this is just really kind of bringing us up to date where we need to be with this. And again, it was just pointed out because the Airbnb, there's some new regulations in the state, and when we started looking into it, we realized we needed to bring this up to date to match our charter, so.
So in order to, to take it away, to leave it as it is, we would have to change our charter?
No, 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 it's in the charter now, we just need to make this match our charter.
What's in our charter?
They, they've been taxing hotels for some time either. There's only one, there's only one motel in our city, by the way, it nails now, there's a Walton, but that's recently, yeah.
So, just to clarify, so in order to levy the tax, the city has to have authority from the state, either by statute, or in this case through its private act charter, so that was done, again, I think in 2003, where it authorized the town to do it, however, the town ratified that charter amendment, but apparently did not adopt an ordinance to, to levy the tax, and that's what is being, what, what you're being asked to do now. So you've got the authority to do it through the private act, but you haven't actually done it by ordinance yet.
We, we have the authority, but not the, the requirement to do it.
Right.
We, if you look at the back of our charter right now, there's a whole section on the back about how this is set up and how it's, how they've been taxing, basically, and then up until this time, just recently, it's only been that one hotel, motel here.
Right, so it, it gives us the option to do it, but it doesn't make it a requirement that we have to do it.
Well.
That's what I'm trying to.
I don't know, that's a question.
It is not a requirement that you have to do it.
We could be the place that doesn't tax that and encourages people to come and have Airbnb's and, and have hotel development, possibly.
Yeah, not, not every city actually even has the authority to do it, in fact, well, the way all that legislation got adopted originally is, as you might expect, not consistent throughout the state, so I don't know what the numbers are, but some cities have the authority to do it, others do not, Carthage does because of that private act.
And I'm trying to remember what the percentage is, I don't, it's not as high as most other places, it's just.
Five percent.
Five percent, and it's, um, whatever reason, um, I mean, it's up to y'all, but.
And this is just first reading, of course, so you do, if you pass, if you pass it tonight, you know, you can reconsider between now and second reading.
Hotels are already paying property taxes, they're paying, um, income taxes, they're paying all kinds of other taxes, and we're gonna throw another five percent on.
Well, they're already paying.
Not only them, but occupants.
Occupants, but again, we wanna encourage people, like, if there's other cities that don't have it, we can also amend our charter to take it out, I mean, I'm just saying, um, we got a high sales kind of tax in the country, does decent force, why do we need all these other taxes, let's, let's find ways to lower taxes, especially in this economy.
Could I make a suggestion, because it, it sounds like maybe we haven't read that at the back of our charter, maybe take a look at it and just kinda see how it's worded, because it's, even though it's five percent, they get back two percent for every time, whatever, I guess, what did you say it was for the?
Basically, they, the, the operator can have two percent of it to defray the cost of having to file, um, to, to pay the tax.
Yeah. It's something they, again, they put in the charter in 2003, it's been, that five percent has been tacked on for occupancy ever since then, with two percent coming back to the operator.
So what you're saying is that they can raise their, the, for the room, for instance, to offset the cost of the tax, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, so pretty much every, everywhere that is applied to.
I didn't get it, but.
Yeah.
I was under the understanding that when you get your bill at a hotel or motel, that it has it a line item, more or less, so you're not really raising the rate of the room, are you? I mean, you're not raising what the, what the retail place is charging, you're raising the tax on it, correct?
And again, this has been, since 2002, that's what that hotel or motel has been charging as, as a tax.
So it really would go back to the operator, because the operator has, or developer, has the option to come here, where we don't levy it, or go to another place where, where they would, I mean, they would encourage them to come here.
Do we have any kind of idea of what percentage of the towns and counties in Tennessee have it?
I'd have to look, there, there is a relatively recent report from TASER, the Tennessee, I can't remember what the acronym is, but that has all of that laid out, I'd have to look at that, and certainly, if you wanted to have that information before next month, whether you passed it tonight or deferred it, we could have that for you.
I think that would be helpful.
We could, if you want to defer it, everybody has a chance to actually read what's in the charter, and then that information, we can defer it to next month.
So it'd be to have the motion rescinded, and we defer to next month, would that be proper?
Well, we've gotta deal with the motion that's on the table right now, so it can be withdrawn.
If it, I mean, sorry, withdrawn, is more people investigate our charter, look at, look at the effects, ask the hotel owners, ask the Airbnb owners, check around the community.
Well, the Airbnb is, that's, is a new thing, they haven't been charged up to now, yes, sir?
The question I have, Trenton Moore, is when this five percent goes on there, the business owner's not paying that tax, the person staying in that room is paying that tax, is that correct?
Correct.
It's not on the business owner or the developer or anybody, it's on the person that's going to be visiting, like, if you went to the beach or whatever, stayed in the hotel.
Yeah, that's correct.
Right.
It adds a little bit of workwork, like you're saying, to the owner to report that and pay that to the state, so, did you say two percent?
Two percent, right.
Goes back to.
They get to keep two percent of the five percent.
Yeah, they deduct that from what they remit to the town.
Imagine advertising, hey, you can stay here in Smith County, you can stay here in Carthage, and you don't pay hotel taxes, advertising that, people, you start building up hotels, it's gonna end you.
Actually, the owner is getting two percent more than he would've gotten, if you wanna look at it that way, because two percent of the tax is coming back to him, is that correct?
Again, he can deduct, he or she can deduct the two percent from the tax that they remit, so they, they do get that down again, and the point of that was to defray the cost of having to administer it.
Would you like to wait till next time and look at the charter?
I'll take a vote.
Okay, uh, would you repeat the motion again, I'm so sorry?
Most approved, the ordinance as written.
Okay, to approve it as written, and another second?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? If not, let's vote on that. First reading only, to approve it as is written right now. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, any opposed?
Opposed, I'll oppose that.
Okay.
And I do just wanna clarify with, because you asked the public hearing question, it shows as a public hearing, with this being a levy of a tax, I need to confirm whether or not a public hearing is required or not, but if it is, of course, we'll advertise it and have that for second reading.
And I would like to get more information, I'd like to have, that's, that's why I said I voted for it tonight, so we still do have another week that we can discuss it and get more information on it.
Okay, so let's go, again, let's, let's do a, let's do a roll call, I couldn't, I think there, and, and again, this is first reading, we can bring setbacks, or whatever, okay, roll call, please.
Councilwoman Knappel?
Yes.
Councilman Badcock?
Yes.
Councilman Evil?
No.
Councilman Peters?
No.
Councilman Tony?
Yes.
Councilman Reese?
No.
Not unless I vote, but I, I kinda would like everybody to have a chance to at least look at the charter that was passed by previous administrations, just to kinda see what we're talking about, if nothing else.
I don't believe that the charter has anything to do with it, and I understand the people have voted against it too, I understand that argument too, it's a difficult situation, but I've experienced in the upcoming area that quite a few counties and cities do levy it, and, so that's the reason I voted, but I, I appreciate y'all's vote too.
Can I?
I agree with what Councilman Bates said, it's, it would've been an incoming, like, revenue for the city, it wouldn't have been any taxpayer expenses, if people were visiting, paying a small percentage.
I'm going to vote to break, break the, break the tie, just because I'd like to see us maybe discuss this some more, and because it's already an ongoing tax, it's a little, we, we, I just think we need to look a little deeper into this and have some more information, so I'm gonna vote in favor just for the first reading, so we can examine this a little bit farther, further, if that's okay. All right, so we'll, we'll bring it back next, next time, and hopefully have some more information to share, this is not a done deal, it's just a chance to look at it a little, a little bit more.
Is, is it possible to get an idea of what actually that would bring in, how much we're gonna be?
Yes, we, we have numbers on this, yes, we have a line item for this, this very tax already in our budget.
Should be looking at starting to go ahead and apply that to Airbnb's as well?
I, well, I, I think that was what brought this up, there was a question, and we answered no to it, so whatever that question was, I'll go back and see, but it's, the question was something like, do we have some sort of formal agreement?
I'll have to see, I think the requirement is, is because, does a town regulate Airbnb's?
Well, yeah, that was it, we, do we regulate, and we put no, so this would not apply for right now.
So it's gonna just affect two businesses in Smith County?
Right now, yeah.
Okay, right, but, but, again, because of the, the way I understand the new law and with the private act, the, the town could apply to Airbnb's, has the authority to do it, um, but because we don't regulate them currently, it would not.
I think it'd be beneficial to councils, is here for the hotel owners, and here for the Airbnb owners, and see what they say.
I think that's a good idea.
I don't know either.
Are there Airbnb's within Carthage?
Yes. We send them menus.
Okay, okay, so, well, well, this is his first reading, it has to, it has to have, pass on two readings, so next week, hopefully, we'll have some more information about this, I'm sorry, we don't have more tonight, but, um, we'll bring some more, I, I, we've got that line item, I'll, I'll get that printed out of what we actually get in taxes, it's, we're not talking about a huge amount of money, but it's, um, it's something.
It's two sides sword in a way, because you're not taking, it's not a whole lot of money when you go and rent a room, say, if you do a room for eighty dollars, is that gonna add four dollars, but on the other side, you know, and I voted for it, but how much benefit do we get out of the damage of the taxes do we get to?
It's margins versus market share, you want more market share, you want, you want higher margins, and so, that's, that's what you're looking at, and sometimes, more market share includes much higher margins, but, again.
Let's go to.
I made one quick statement.
All right.
Please, if you will, Cole, try to get those people with Airbnb's to come, because that's what we need to do, is hear from these people.
Yes, sir.
Okay, and again, right now, there, there aren't being taxed, there's nothing, we would have to amend this to tax them, that's what I'm saying, right now, this is, this for hotels, hotels, okay, the last, oh wait, no, it isn't, I'm finished, we have.
Number seven.
Seven.
Number seven, okay, um, oh, Councilwoman Knappel asked us to do some research into this, there's, Danielle, our recorder, got this email from them, from our public entity partners who would control any kind of situation, I also talked with them today, and, well, a couple of times, um, it's, it's, and I was trying to get some more explanation from Mr. Moore, they were saying, okay, it's two, there's two different scenarios, of course, you've gotta have liability insurance with a rider for the, for the city, there's a different scenario if these drinks are being given by the host, or if it's being sold, there's a whole different ballgame, if, if you're gonna start selling drinks, because, I guess, because of licensing's and taxing and everything else, um, even though we are covered with the liability, we can still be sued, we can always be sued if somebody goes out and kills somebody with their drug.
It's not what this says.
Well, I'm, I'm just saying, they can sue us for anything, regardless of what this, well, hold on, please, just a second, but that's kind of what they're saying to us, um, of course, the county doesn't have these policies, they don't have this, which is a little awkward, because when we do things, and we go into county property, that's a whole different ballgame, instead of this, so, um, I, I don't know that there's a motion here at all, we just brought back.
Do, do we have that, 'cause I don't think I have.
No.
You, you should, it's in your package.
It's, uh, it's from.
So I'd like to see it, please.
Sure.
There's been a, ask a question?
Sure.
Make a statement, um, this is right, what they wrote, um, liability insurance, if you have an event, you need to get liability insurance, whoever's doing the event, whether it's organization A, organization B, they can have it, if you serve liquor, you have to get a liquor rider on that, that's pretty expensive, but it's, it cannot be, not be held liable, the thing we can be held liable is for negligence, um, it is up to the event area, and I would strongly suggest that us as a town do require, if there is a liquor event or an alcohol event, require first the liability insurance to begin to us, second, make sure it has that liquor rider on it, that helps us out as a town, and so, you're correct on this amendment.
Chief, do we have any thoughts from the, and have y'all?
I mean, not really, I, I haven't really thought much about it, Mayor.
Okay.
I know, I think, how many events have y'all had, Councilman Evil, has it been two up there so far?
I think River City's, it tends to have two.
I don't know of any incidents on, that we've had that were negative in any way, shape, or form, um, I think some of the concerns before in the past was they wanted security up there, so I do think, you know, if those do happen, some type of security where law enforcement presence, where either they pay for overtime for officers to sit up there and help with traffic and all that kinda stuff, just for, or whatever, other than that, I mean, I.
I've had hundreds of thousands.
I think that's a council decision, I think, I'm sorry.
Any, any thoughts or comments from the rest of the county?
That would just be my only thought, is, does it place more concern on law enforcement? Because we've got somebody out of this, outside of an establishment that is providing, selling, or providing liquor.
I think it probably depends which person you ask, just to be truthful about it, I think if you ask some of the members of my department, you would say, they would say yes, if you ask some other members of my department, they would probably say no, I think you're gonna get split decisions on that, just to be truthful, so, I know that doesn't really answer the question, but I mean.
The training for an establishment is like a four-hour training, but we would have no way of knowing if the person that's dispensing or selling actually has that responsible beverage server training.
May I answer that question for you? Uh, they are required to have ABC certification, um, as our, as our restaurant did when we first opened, um, we went through Smith County Drug Coalition for our training for ABC for all of our servers, they are required to have that, um, liquor and beer, whatever, um, it doesn't magically change if you drink it inside a building, or drink it outside a building.
Access to it does.
Access to it does not either, if you are checking, um, if you're checking, if you're checking IDs, if you were, the same exact requirements are required for serving liquor, you are required every time to check that ID, and I learned that in the training. And I learned that in the training that Smith County Drug Coalition gave me, okay? So that is still required, is the same exact requirement, is the same exact accessibility as liquor by the drink.
May I ask a question just from the council? Do you hear from the community about this? What do our citizens think about any of this? Or do they have you or anything of any of them?
We have heard from them in our meeting and they all were against it. Everyone that came to our meeting was against doing that. The council passed it anyway, so.
I think it, I.
Excuse me. This was which meeting again?
It was a council meeting.
Oh, a council, whoops.
It was a council meeting where individuals filled up rooms and said they were against that, they did not see it as bringing any benefit to the town of Carthage. It would be good to hear from you.
The only concern that I would have is you also have ordinance in the city that says open container. So if you're gonna sponsor an event that hopefully violates the city ordinance, we need to do something with that ordinance if we're gonna allow people to buy it.
But we have, we have, we've already.
Excuse me, sir, let's, Mr. Moore speak to that.
My recollection is that we did create an exemption to that ordinance for those special events. So, Mayor, if I may just briefly, we, I also spoke with representatives from the public entity partners and the police was the only other issue that really they had, as long as we make sure that they have the liability coverage that they need to cover the services of alcohol. And we do need to be very careful and verify that before the event. Knoxville, for example, requires any special event that is going to serve alcohol to have law enforcement on site at all times and at their expense. But our ordinance has a provision for review of the application by the police department and the fire department. So if in approving an application, you want to make that a requirement for an event, I think that's certainly within the council's authority to do it. But from a liability perspective, and I haven't seen that email, but based on Cole reading, I don't think there's really any increased exposure, again, as long as they're insured.
Just to bring our two council new people up to date, last year, was it last year? We voted on what's called a special event permit. So each special event would have to apply, tell what they're doing, show any insurance they have, and then the council would actually vote, do we let that event happen or not here? What's, what I'm hearing from some of the citizens, and that's kinda why I wanted to hear from y'all, it's a mixed bag.
Yeah. What Barbara said, I think you asked, what the public was saying, I just remember the meetings that we had down at City Hall and I think you guys were there. You remember it well.
I do.
Mr. Heather informed you and he let us know, you know, I think in that meeting, what I thought about.
And, you know, setting my own feelings aside about that issue, is it a benefit to the town of Carthage for us to do that? I think that's the bottom line. Is it a benefit to the town of Carthage for us to allow alcohol and take that risk? And the other thing you brought up, a good point, you guys did a beautiful event and I have no problem with River City Ball, this has nothing to do, in my opinion, with River City Ball. I've been there. You guys did an excellent event and I think you crossed all your teeth and dotted all your i's, I do. But I don't know that everybody would do that. You said yours are ABC trained, that's wonderful, because anybody that dispenses liquor needs to be, it's a huge training and a huge liability.
Absolutely.
But I don't know that that's a part of what we would be requiring. So that would be a good thought, but I don't, at the bottom line, our citizens didn't want it, we still voted for it and said it was, in the ordinance said it was gonna be a benefit to the city, but I don't see any benefit to the city too, because we have establishments that sell liquor right there, beer, whatever. So we're actually kinda going against our establishments that we offer it on Main Street and they have establishments that sell it.
The River City Ball event was done well, you know, but we get somebody else in, is it gonna be that well-controlled and, you know, we just opened up a lot of things. But the way they did it was excellent, I agree.
And again, we're talking about doing it on public, city public property. Yes, sir.
For me, in my own special interest, to vote along, say that we ban alcohol, would be in my personal best interest. That means more people come to my establishment, but it's not about my best interest. It is about the freedom of choice, the freedom of people to choose. I believe, as you do, that environments are very important and also being responsible. With liberty comes responsibility. It is not our responsibility as government to make decisions for people. It is our responsibility as individuals to make decisions for ourselves. And should we not be responsible with those decisions, it is up to that individual to pay the consequence. It is not our place to regulate that.
What decisions are we making for people?
I'm sorry. Councilman, have a stand.
The question I have is, do we charge a fee for the application for the event?
I think there is.
No.
I think there is an app.
There's an app, I don't think that there's a fee, but it kinda falls in line. And again, also too, just to clarify, this is not.
May I answer that, sir?
This is not.
Excuse me, there is an application fee, but we do not charge, and this is a sticking point too, we don't charge for them using our public facility.
The second part, if we get to approve the applications, we can approve events individually, correct?
Right.
So then, to me, that would be something that we would have to approve. If we dislike one event, think it's gonna be different, they don't have the right ABC server, they don't have the right insurance, we don't approve it.
Yeah, except if they comply with the terms of the ordinance, then I do think we would have to treat each one right. But in the ordinance, it does require that they have the appropriate license from the state for service of liquor, which requires the ABC server.
And it's not, just so you all know, it's not, every time everyone else talks, you don't honor them, but every time I'm talking, you do.
We need to have full discussion.
Let me clarify something.
Excuse me, sir. You're out of order. This is a discussion for the whole group, please. So is anyone who hasn't spoken like to speak to this? Have an opportunity to speak. Robert's rules, declare everyone. Do we have a motion? I'm sorry, we don't have a motion.
This is a discussion.
It's just a discussion. I would like to clarify because Councilwoman Moore, excuse me, Cannable, they not had a chance to finish. I don't think we're talking about freedom of choice one way or other, we're talking about the use of our public property, just like the county says no, they can't have liquor on county property. We're talking about the same thing and that's, I think, what this, citizens have come to meet because they just want this discussed a little further, I think is what it was all about, so.
May I be recognized?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. I have nothing to do, by the way, with River City Ball. I do some private charity donations to it because it is charities that it is, and that's between me and the charity, it's no one's business. So I have nothing to do, I have no interest in it, I just give to it, okay? Second off, let's just say, let's do the Halloween event again. Let's say we decide we don't want liquor on the streets of Carthage. Cool, alright, we do that. So what we've done is we got open roads and the county decides that they want to allow liquor on county property and it becomes county issue, okay? But let's say someone wants to decide to, something help, you wanna talk about opening up a liability there of the city where we don't have coverage because someone wandered off of that. Right here, we're doing the responsible thing in that area, we're creating a zone, we're working with the county on it, and if there is an event, whether it's River City Ball or another event, we're creating a better environment so that it is more like an inside establishment. We're doing exactly what it says, we have requirements, we have ABC licenses, and it really shouldn't be a political matter, it should be, I'm fine with regulation, I don't think anyone in this town has an issue with the regulation on it. People wanna have, say, I've had this many alcohol instances, issues in my establishment in three and a half years, zero. It's not an issue. Now, if it's an issue in people's families, that's in people's families, but we need to create, if there is gonna be an environment, needs to be a safe environment for drinking, and that's how it is. And if ours, people who are benefiting from it, I don't know, ask the charities how much they benefit.
Yes, sir.
I got about two minutes, I'm done.
I'm gonna show my ignorance here, but it was due, does River City Ball also utilize county, uh, city property or is it, is it just on the courthouse lawn or does it go into the streets?
No, it's only on, only on the city property. They can't go into county property because.
County doesn't allow it.
Oh, they didn't do it on the courthouse lawn?
No, they don't allow liquor in the, and this is, let me throw out one more question that's been asked by a lot of citizens to meet in this last year. Could we not have these events without liquor and they be just as well-received? Because it's, whatever the event is, they do it up in a lovely way, and I'm not talking about one event or the other. A lot of citizens have said, can't we just have these events without serving alcohol?
I think people would still come because it is for the charity and the charity is wonderful that they do that event. I'm all for charities, you guys know that. But I think people would come and have a lot of fun and have a nice dinner and dancing and music. And we wouldn't have, we wouldn't have young people that were wandering around seeing people drinking out in the.
Have any of you heard anything from new constituents?
Is there a motion that we're supposed to be going with, or is?
I would like something, but I don't know, I think maybe this is.
If there's not, call a question, call a question.
Okay, I think this was brought up because Councilwoman Cannable and several citizens have asked us to kinda look at this.
I appreciate you giving the answer and that was a big answer that I needed to hear. It would be up to everyone if we were to change.
Yes, sir.
Kinda, I don't make that often in Canada, but, okay, just for instance, like if somebody goes to your establishment and drinks somewhere and they go out with their car and racing cane and, you know, getting loud, what do you do? You're, when they go out that door, it's off you, right?
Not necessarily, no. You can still have, I can have liability on it, so.
The reason why I'm asking, I ran into that myself when we've had play practice and I've had the ladies in rehearsal to stay in courthouse till the street cleared out a little bit and never go to their car by themselves.
Our biggest issue is someone who is, has drank before, they've come into an establishment and you'll ask any other alcohol establishment, it's an issue, you don't know what you're giving them, and all of a sudden they come in, they ask for a drink, well, once you could, oh, all of a sudden, you just found out the way they're acting, they've had ten drinks before they got in there. It's a cutoff and that's the scary part, cause yeah, there could be a liability on it. Now, if you can prove that, it's pretty easy to prove, takes a liability on it, but let's just say that my bartender or whoever, and they can lose their licenses over it, decides to keep serving, keep serving, keep serving, keep pumping drinks into it, that ABC person, they can be liable, the restaurant can be liable, everything else is. But according to this, again, and should he turn him on, the city has no liability on this, but we should require the general liability, we should also require the liquor liability on there too. I think it would be beneficial also, let's get credentials of your ABC servers, let's see how it's gonna happen. I don't think anyone's against a responsible area to do it.
What I'm saying, that too, I understand what you're saying. This couple or three people went back into the establishment, you know, and we had, there was a safe time there, so we walked the ladies out to the car, but like I said, it was, if it was kids involved, if we had kids there at the courthouse, I felt really uncomfortable. Enough with the ladies there and they've just been told, in any rehearsal, they go to the car with an escort, never by themselves, because it's been some kinda shady, rough characters across the street at times.
Where's the shady?
Just across the street.
One other question that, actually, two different citizens have asked.
Right there in front of the courthouse.
About last year, about one event that was there, and I guess there was a true drink minimum sold with the ticket for the event, but then at the end, they were told, oh, if you like additional drinks, just come up and we'll give you, for five dollars, we'll give you this fancy drink, which does put it in a whole different category because that's additional drinking, plus it takes it over to your selling liquor on public property. So that's, that's something in the future we're gonna have to be very careful about because apparently that happened and that raised a legal issue of why was that allowed to happen? So, anyway, any, are you okay?
I'm motion to move on to new business, second.
Okay. All right. Any further discussion? All in favor, we'll go right on. All right. All right. So we've talked about the walking track. Ah, okay, we're talking to Public Works here about this lovely sweeper that you have the diagram of, Derek or Les, whoever wants to talk to this.
Whoever, I have submitted in the, in the title, it's a street sweeper attachment to attach to our existing truck. I believe this will help us, it'll take away the car point and shovels and the blowers and, you know, just cut down on manpower and we'll be able to cover more area in full time to help us keep the city streets and the shovels looking better, hopefully keep the grass and all that stuff from growing up the curb. I did reach out to multiple companies and I only received one quote, so this price, it was good up until December the 25th. I guess what I'm asking is, is your approval to submit this out for bid? Because it is over the, the money is already in the budget, it's already been, it's already in there, so we won't have to get any amendments or anything like that. It is under machinery and equipment in the budget?
Okay.
Yes.
Motion to approve.
Are you saying to send it out to bid or just?
No, you're good. I'll just, I'll just. Motion to approve to send it out for bids for this.
I would ask though, that once we receive those bids, that I'd be able to go ahead and go with the lowest bid, so we won't have to wait till the next meeting to.
Motion to approve that he send out for bids, accept lowest bid as long as the money's covered with his budget line.
Okay, second, so we've got a motion second, any further discussion on that?
What's that, what's that dollar amount of cap on that budget?
Uh, there's thirty in there.
Thirty thousand, so do we want to, it's all that thirty thousand or what would you put, what would you?
Thirty in there and this is half of that, so.
Okay.
So if we approve this, can you go with, he's wanting to, can he go ahead and do it rather than wait till the next meeting?
Right, right.
So that's the motion to, let's go ahead.
Okay, any further discussion?
And I have no issue with that, I just wanna make sure, can we do that ahead even if it's not in that billion or two thousand or would it have to come back?
I would, again, since I've been here, we have not pre-approved a purchase like that. If you wanna put a cap on it, again, I'm not aware of the authority where the two thousand dollar amount comes from, I haven't found that anywhere, but certainly you can put it out to bid, you can award it to the lowest bidder, budget it, you don't have to change it.
I'll re-sign my motion and make another motion. I'm motion to approve that he be able to send us out to bid, the price of machinery not to exceed the fifteen nine that's on this estimate at this time. I'm second to that.
Should we do that?
Yeah, I'll.
Okay. Not to, not to, okay, you got it. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. Okay, Chief Davis.
Yes, ma'am.
Now, you want a purchase, tell us yours.
Yes, ma'am. So everyone knew last, this last budget, we talked about getting another patrol car this year and I waited till hopefully everything kinda calmed down and I reached out using the state bid and was able to get a quote from two different companies or two different dealerships, the same price almost, essentially a couple hundred dollars difference. One of them actually hasn't been stocked on the actual lot, the other ones that they would have to order them and it would take six weeks at least, if not, usually it takes two months or more. So my, I ask that we all go ahead and approve that, the money's in the budget, it's already there and we have to go ahead and start placing these patrol cars.
Motion approved.
Motion.
Second.
Second. Any discussion of that? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'll let it go, Mark.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
This last item, we can move or can talk about quickly, this is just several residents on Carmack Avenue have bombarded me with phone calls. Yes, sir.
Mayor, I don't know if this is a motion or whatever, but my thought is that we need to have a town meeting or whatever and have these people come to this and present, but I would like to see us do a, an actual letter and I don't mind hand-delivering to all the people on Carmack because sometimes they don't see it in the paper, so that we have access to all people to make.
Sure.
Say, will you make a motion to that?
If I do, if that's what I need to do, I'll.
Make a motion, I was gonna say the exact same thing.
Okay. So, motion to have, to invite them maybe to regular, next regular meeting and call?
By letter.
By, by a letter, yes.
Motion to move that everyone on Carmack Avenue receive a letter to be a.
Motion to move that everyone on Carmack Avenue receive a letter to be invited to a public meeting to discuss the speed limit on Carmack Avenue.
Okay, well, we have the citizens' concerns, so how about the beginning of the next meeting, come to address the citizens' concern, okay?
I think that's great.
All right, all right. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. Any further discussion?
Just clarifying, the city, the city will send those letters out to those people up on that street.
Well, Sam's.
You can either send them out or I'll war.
Sam's gonna deliver them.
Get them, tell me, sir. Maybe I'll win your due. I'll get them, and I'll take them.
Okay, now, you can't put them in the post box. You have to put it in the door. Okay. Yeah, we'll, we'll do that. Thank you very much. Okay, any, yes, sir.
Okay, if you're gonna discuss something real quick.
Okay.
If we do the fifty, fifty mile per hour on Carmack, when can we discuss other areas in town?
I think that's a great discussion to have.
Just put it on the, put it on the agenda if you see one.
Yeah.
I'd amend my motion that we send out letters to the citizens of Carthage, Tennessee to discuss the speed limits within the city and all streets.
Yeah, 'cause there's some other.
Send them to everybody. Send them to the whole, the whole city. They wanna talk about.
Oh, my goodness. Right, you're talking about, oh, thank you. Do you realize that's over a thousand letters?
Instead of going street by street, let's just knock it out, be done with it.
Well, it's over a thousand letters. It's a little bit of a.
I believe Chief Davis would might help fill in those.
It took me three months.
Can I, can I offer a top possibility, if we put it on our Facebook page and put it in, in the courier at the same time, maybe? I don't know.
Is that good with everybody else, basically, based on?
Honestly, I, I see what you're saying, but I think we need to address this one issue right now, and.
But if we do this, then we go this month, this month. We go on the streets in Carthage. If we have a public hearing, we'll have a public hearing.
You talking about like a generalized speed limit for the entire city?
That's what.
That's what I'm saying. There's some other areas in town that's just as bad.
I mean, I, I, I mean.
That I've got complaints about.
Yeah, and, and so, I live on Carmack, so I'm gonna.
I'm not talking about Carmack. I'm talking about other.
No, it's my concern.
Could I hear from just?
We have a motion, we have a second, so.
A second. Part of the discussion, Chief, is there anything you want to add to this, or do you wanna?
Well, I think, I think when the, I don't know who set it up a long time ago, I think the reason it's twenty-five on most of the side streets is consistency. Consistency, consistency for a reason. That way, everybody knows, and it's not gonna be changing from this street to this street to this street. Does that make sense? So I, I think the main streets are thirty miles an hour for a reason, side streets are twenty-five. If, I mean, there's gonna be some flexibility, obviously, in certain areas for a specific reason. I don't think we need to be too carried away, though, with changing a bunch of streets, and you having fifteen here, twenty-five on the next street, over fifteen here. I think we need to be careful with that, so just think about that.
I'll just ask him, when can we discuss this, since we need to?
Yeah. The other, let me throw one other thing, 'cause we've kind of checked into what has to be done to even change a speed limit. We do have to get some sort of engineer to go out and kind of look at the situation, along with our police department and everything else. So we'll need some input from several different people.
I'm with Chief on this, 'cause it's gonna get kind of complicated. I give you, I, I'm fine with doing a whole meeting here. I just don't wanna spend the money, send the letters out to everybody if we're gonna do that.
I'm good with however.
We just do a public announcement. We have a few.
I'm sorry, last.
Do you have an engineer to do that?
No, I don't mean that they're gonna do it, but there has to be some, not a engineer engineer, but you do have to do some sort of studies.
I believe this, if you're increasing, not decreasing. That's my, yeah, I don't see why we need an engineer for this.
Well, I think T. Don, I don't know.
Well, T. that's a different, I'll say.
Okay. Yes, ma'am, yes, sir.
I have just a quick question. Did they have a specific reason as to why they, what were their concerns?
Yes, their concerns are, first of all, Carmack is not an air, not a big street, and it, with the cars on either side. At certain times, when these heavy trucks come up and down, everything from kids playing in it, or at night, it's, it's you go out to your car, and these big old trucks are coming down, and your car's always, it's very close in there. So they just think, if they could slow these folks down a little bit, it might be safer for them, is what they're saying.
Well, that is, that's a good thought. I live on Pike, and the school buses come down that, that street, and I'm, I'm concerned about the cars parked on each side. But the school buses coming down, it's difficult. They're coming up that hill, and if there's another car coming down, they have to literally stop and let that other car come down, so that's a treat.
What I'm saying is, we changed this right here to fifteen mile thing there. There are other people in these other areas that's gonna want the same thing.
And instead of the fifteen.
Councilman Peters, do you?
The simplest thing is to, in my mind, is if you're gonna make it fifteen there, just make it fifteen on all side streets. Instead of street by street, sending out letters, if we're gonna have side streets, a certain one, all the same, just like we have the main one.
The ones I'm talking about, the streets I'm talking about, there are a lot of kids there on that street.
Just make it the same.
I'm just killing myself.
Well, and most of the streets, they park on each side, and it can be an issue. So, yeah, be consistent for sure.
Yeah, yeah. Not twenty-five on this street, fifteen on here and this one.
I tell you what, how about if we all just talk to the citizens and kind of get a feel for this, and maybe bring it back next time?
Well, he's got a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Are you good with the Facebook and the, the courier?
I amend my motion to go ahead and post it to Facebook and Towns Page and Courier.
Second.
To, to say what now? I'm sorry.
Announcement.
Announcement about public hearing to reduce the speed limit on Carmack Avenue from twenty-five to fifteen miles an hour. Sending it on Carthage City's Facebook page and the Carthage Courier.
So just Carmack, not the whole city?
I, that was, I mean. So the one regarding Carmack, I think it already passed for those letters to be circulated to the residents of Carthage, I think.
Uh, it did, it did.
They never.
All right, so the motion is just for, just for Carmack to put an announcement on Facebook and in the Courier, to have at the beginning of next.
I'm gonna amend my motion again. Let's have a public hearing on the speed limits in the city of Carthage, posted on Facebook and then the Courier.
Okay.
Best thing to do is resend your motion, send it up, throw all amendments, and just make one, one motion. That way, we don't have to use him.
Okay, so you resend your motion, start over, is that what you do, okay?
Motion that we have a public hearing on the speed limits in the city of Carthage on all streets. By sending out a public notice on Facebook and then the Carthage Courier.
Second.
And, and at the beginning of next month's meeting, citizens' concern. Okay, great. Love it. All right, thank you very much. All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Motion to adjourn.
All right.